Welcome to Council Chambers. It's 6:01 and you're all here for a public forum. And our public forums in the past have dealt with issues in the city. And the purpose of a public forum is to get your voice heard. To get your voice heard regarding the issues. Now, sometimes just getting your voice heard and for the public record is essential if you want to be part of that record and give reference to it in the future. So, public forums are pretty, very important. And many of us like to think as the council as being transparent and open. And this is the openness that we encourage. So, I want to do introductions and then a little bit of housekeeping. So, we've got, if everyone wants to testify, you're going to have to hold your testimonies down to 30 seconds or a minute. And if you'd like to leave after that, that's fine because we are so overcrowded and it's massive. And I do think that we should have held this in a larger venue. At this point, it's like apparent. But let's get on with it, okay? And introductions. I'm Doug Morton, I'm council president. And this is John Walsh, our city administrator. And then we have Ginny Carlson, who oversees planning. And our senior council member Keith Locke, who oversees the police. We have our city recorder here Kathy Payne. And Matt Brown, our finance director. Margaret Jeffries, our librarian and our head librarian. And then we have Neil, Neil Shepherd, and Sue Nelson, and Public Works. And also back there in the frame of the door, we have our parks superintendent Thad Hall. So, with that, from the council's point of view, this is what's happened. In our last budget meeting, and when we had the budget committee together, we found that we were very short with parks. And how are we going to keep our parks open? How are we going to fund parks? So, the budget committee recommended, in the very last meeting, that the finance director, who is Matt Brown, look at alternative means to fund the parks. And from a council's point of view, that's where this all started. The budget committee gave to the council the recommendation to, for us to assign to Matt the whole idea of finding alternative methods. He presented to the council in April or May, the idea of the sugar beverage tax. At that time, we thought, wow, this is kind of a, this is something that's going to be very controversial. I think that we should have, and we thought we should have public forum at that time. And that's why you're here. So, hopefully out of this, it isn't a yea or a nay, as much as it is finding alternatives to fund our parks. And as from my personal point of view. So, there's, it's a matter of you expressing your concerns. If you're going to express concerns and that are very similar to the person who just expressed a concern in front of you, just come up, state your name, and say, hey, I agree with that guy or that person just in front of me. And that will expedite things. We have a 7 o'clock meeting at, for our city council meeting following this. So, time is of the essence. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Matt Brown, our finance director. And he's going to tell us again why we're here.
So, I'm going to give you about a 10-minute presentation about the Parks Department to let you know kind of where we are at as a city and what we are looking at and some of the steps that have brought us here. It's very important to understand, for the public to understand, that the city council at this time has made no decision on whether to move forward with a sugar sweetened beverage tax or not, as well as what amount it would be or wouldn't be. So, this is one of our parks. If you recognize the swing, it's actually from Godfrey Park. It was installed back in 1965. As you can probably tell from the picture, it's deteriorating a little bit. Looks a little bit of old. One of the issues that we have in parks is that we have no specific funding source for our Parks Department as far as maintenance and upkeep and staff. The Parks Department is lumped in with the general fund, which has expenses as well, like the police department, all the administration, and the library, and many other departments. So, that's one of the issues that has brought us here, is that we have no specific funding source to keep parks going. We have about 1.5 FTE in parks for maintenance and upkeep. And we have about 135 acres of actual parkland in this city. To give you a frame of reference, that is about 102 football fields that we have to maintain year-round. We do get summer help for basically part-time workers that come in for 20 to 30.
What's FTE?
FTE, I'm sorry, is full-time employees. So, one full-time employee and then essentially a half of the part-time people. Some of the issues that are obviously, everyone can see, is the age and infrastructure. This is some of our tennis courts. And some of the issues are starting to become safety hazards for children that do play in the parks. Obviously, as the equipment gets older, it starts to fall apart, it starts to rust, and it becomes unsafe. And that is the point where we are getting with many of the parks. A couple of things that I want the city council and the public to understand a little bit better is where do we get some of our money from that helps pay for the Parks Department? Part of that comes from your property taxes. Now, the property tax rate in Columbia County is $10.56 per thousand for a residential property. It is actually the 20th lowest in the state of Oregon. Out of that $10, the city actually only receives $1.90. That $1.90 is the second lowest in Columbia County. It is also the 45th lowest in the state of Oregon. Scappus next door receives $3.22 per thousand. So, they're in a little bit better shape as far as the city receiving property tax revenue. The remaining money is split among a number of different jurisdictions, including the county jail, 911, the school district, fire district, as well as the Greater St. Helens Parks and Rec district. It's important for people to understand that the Parks and Rec district has nothing to do with the city of St. Helens. They are simply the aquatic center. So, unfortunately, they have the name of Parks and Rec. But I just want the public to understand that the Parks and Rec Greater St. Helens has nothing to do with the city and they strictly maintain the aquatic center that we have. So, back in 2015, the city council and staff and consultants put together a master plan for our parks. Basically, a dream list of what we want our parks to be in the future. And they come up, they came up with a number of projects depending on the park. It totaled about $3.9 million in improvements that we would like to do. Unfortunately, we only have about $100,000 in the bank that is dedicated to pay for this. So, we have a little bit of a gap. And that's why we're here. This is a handout that you saw on the table. If you were able to grab one, I probably did not print it up, so I apologize. This is the list that I presented to the budget committee and the city council on revenue opportunities and expense opportunities to cut. The top four that you see are items that have already been completed. The middle section are the ones that we are currently researching or working on. One of those is the excise tax for sugar sweetened beverages. So, some of the things that we have already completed are updating our fee schedules for departments, working on intergovernmental contracts, putting an administrative fee on the motel hotel tax that is received, as well as creating a fee in lieu of provisions for developers who don't build sidewalks on their specific property. They actually pay us a fee for the cost of putting the sidewalks. That way, the city can use that money to put in sidewalks somewhere elsewhere it makes more sense or is needed. So, a couple of the options that we're researching, I mentioned the excise tax. We have the local option levy, which is part of this discussion. We also have looked at utility billing, adding additional fees. There are a number of cities around the country, as well as in the state of Oregon, that add specific fees to utility bills. This would be something like a park service fee, or a general service fee, or a police fee. It can really be up to whatever the council wants to do, if they choose to do that. We've also looked at combining our utility billing and court departments to improve some efficiencies. We've also had the Public Works Department starting to go through and look at some of our old unused equipment that we have laying around to see, do we really need this 50-year-old track code? Can we get rid of it because we already bought a new one? Those kind of items, those kind of things that are just some general good housekeeping. We've also looked at franchise fees, which receive, we receive from like the Columbia PUD, Northwest Natural, those Comcast companies that pay the city a franchise fee. We've also looked at improving our court departments, as well as succession planning and some of our other departments around the city. The items at the very bottom you see are ones that the city council has decided not to move forward with at this, at this specific time. Those include hiring an additional full-time inspector, sick leave payout, which is a benefit for employees, as well as the police reimbursement for expenses, and a construction excise tax, which is similar to a sugar sweetened beverage tax. It's basically we tack on an extra percentage onto a building permit that is used for a specific purpose. So, as Doug mentioned in his introduction, this is a little roadmap of kind of where we got and why we're here. So, back in January, I presented this back to the budget committee. In March, the council reviewed this entire list and had a discussion and a public work session, and pretty much decided what we wanted to move forward with and what we didn't want to do. So, in April, the public council heard a presentation from the Public Health Foundation, as well as my personal presentation for the sugar sweetened beverage, of what it could look like, how it would work, what it could be spent on. From this, this is when you probably started reading some of the news articles and then the news started spreading around the city. And then also when the council decided to hold a public forum to see the public reaction and hear what the public had to say. These are some of the pictures of what we would like to do in our Parks Department. Obviously, the riverfronts, some of the ADA capabilities that are possible, new restaurants, spray parks. This is an example from Classica Night Elementary School. This was actually assisted by the OSU Extension Office, who paid for some of the planning and development of this elementary school park through a child obesity grants. These are some parks that we could look at if we had funding. You know, I imagine a waterfront property would look pretty cool for a kid to go play on with Captain Gigs' playboat down on the waterfront. Maybe in McCormick Park, put in something a little more ADA accessible, more family-friendly, more sensory issues related. These are all possibilities that we can do if we have public support. And that's why we're here, to look at options for our public parks funding, to see if soda tax is not the answer, this can't be. Because I know I'm not excited to bring my kid to play on that park. So, we've racked our brains and came up with 11 options of what we could look at for funding for parks. We have grants, which we currently always try and get. Unfortunately, grants are becoming more and more harder to get, as well as we're not getting as much when we do apply for grants. So, it's hard to build $3.9 million in improvements, $5,000 at a time. The city could go into more debt. We could also wait for developments. Every time a new residential house is put in or a new development, there are system development charges that are charged. On a residential property, it's roughly about $13,000 that the builder pays just in system development charges. And those go to water, sewer, storm, streets, and parks. Of that $13,000, the parks receives $3,000. Now, that money is very specifically earmarked for SDC improvements, which basically means we can only spend it on capacity improvements. Capacity would mean something like buying, building a new park, increasing the size of an existing park. It can't be spent on replacing a swing or replacing a slide. So, a couple of the other options are the local option levy, which means that it would go out to the voters for you to approve a local option levy for a certain amount over a certain amount of time that would show up on your property tax bills. As well as the same thing would be considered for the bond, similar to what was approved for the school bond for building the new schools. We can look at utility billing, service fees. To give you an idea, if I had to raise $4 million over the next five years, that would mean that I would have to put a $13 or $14 monthly service charge onto your bill for parks. I don't think that's something that you would like. So, number option seven is why we're here tonight, which is the excise tax. The other options, we can look at other excise taxes. I've heard a number of options from people that you should tax this instead of this. Unfortunately, with excise taxes, we will end up here at the same spot with just probably a somewhat different crowd. The other options are, we can look at privatizing parks, which I don't, I'm pretty sure the council is not a huge fan of, as well as closing some of the least-used or smaller parks. We could also look at adopt a park programs where we work with local businesses or the school district to try and take over some of the maintenance and issues that we have in some of our parks. So, this list of 11 options, if, even if you don't speak tonight, there are little quarter sheets on the back table if there are any left, and I can definitely go print out some more. But before you leave, there are pens back there. Please take a second, circle one, circle two, cross out one that you hate, cross out 11 that you hate, I don't care. If there's something that you think we didn't think of, write it down and put it in the box. Because your feedback can be used in the future for how the city council decides to move forward. So, if nothing else tonight, please take the time, circle one or two that you think are your favorite or ones that you would agree to work with, so that we don't have to deal with this.
Thank you, Matt. And with that, we're a few minutes beyond where we are on our agenda. So, now's the time for the proponent presentation. The Public Health Foundation. We'll give you 10 minutes, and if you can make it shorter or break, more break, we'd appreciate it. Is there another chair over on that side? Or you got one right? Okay, there we go. Introduce yourself and move forward.
Hi there. I am Heather Oliver and my partner Claire Katz. We are the prevention coordinators for the Public Health Foundation of Columbia County. And we first just want to say thank you for having us tonight and being committed to creating a healthier community here in St. Helens. What we're going to be presenting on is what are sugary beverages, the data, the health effects on consumption of sugary beverages, and then the local and national successes that we're seeing. So, first of all, I just want to point out that these are the items that we're talking about today. The sodas, energy drinks, sports drinks, everything with the added sugar. This doesn't include the 100% juices or medical beverages. Food makers add sugar to about 80, sorry, 68% of our packaged foods. Soda companies alone spend billions of dollars a year on marketing sugary sodas, sports drinks, energy drinks, fruit flavored drinks, and a lot of that marketing is geared toward our kiddos. As you can see in this pie chart, our sugar consumption comes more than 45% of it from sugary drinks. And we'll show you that that is leading to some chronic health diseases, as well as empty calories. I brought for you today a few of our favorite bottles of generic cola, 20 ounces, or I think this is a 20.5 and a 32 ounce, with a visual representation of how much sugar would be contained in those generic cola products. These well surpass our dietary guidelines for Americans, and especially when a youth is drinking that entire container. So, this contains 16, a little over 16 teaspoons of sugar. Our dietary guideline suggests that added sugar make up no more than 10% of our caloric intake. Why, or added sugars back? Added sugars have really close links to lots of our chronic conditions and diseases. For example, cardiovascular disease. One in every three deaths in the United States were due to cardiovascular disease in 2013. Cardiovascular disease includes coronary heart disease, heart attack, high blood pressure, and stroke. Drinking these sugary beverages on a regular basis increases those risk factors. So, it generates a 17% higher risk of coronary heart disease, 19% higher risk of heart attack, and 30% higher risk of dying from one of these conditions. Another concern is diabetes. In 2013, the most recent local Columbia County data shows that 10% of Columbia County residents have been diagnosed with diabetes. This does not include pre-diabetes and does not include anyone that's undiagnosed. It's been estimated that as our sugar consumption stays high, that those numbers can really, really, really increase by 2050, being close to one in every three adults being diagnosed with diabetes. Drinking sugary drinks regularly, so that sugar regularly, causes a 26% higher risk of diabetes. So, moving on to tooth decay, something that I don't think a lot of people are aware of, tooth decay is the most common chronic disease among children ages 6 to 11, and adolescents 12 to 19. In a recent study, it shows over half of Oregon's children ages 6 to 9 have at least one cavity. Going along with that, almost two out of three of our youth consume sugary drinks every single day. And children who experience dental pain are more likely to miss school and have difficulty learning. When it comes to the bacteria in our mouth, when we're exposing it to the sugars and things like this, it's creating cavity-causing acids. And the more we're exposing our mouth to sugars, the more cavity-causing acids that are going to be released and thus create a larger problem. Not only are youth affected by this epidemic, 91% of adults, adults ages 20 to 64 have had dental cavities in their permanent teeth. And 27% of those people have untreated decay. And keep in mind with all of this, that tooth decay is highly preventable. Let's take a look at how much beverages, especially sugary beverages, our eighth graders are consuming. This was self-reported in 2015. We can see that Columbia County youth are consuming higher in most areas than our Oregon counterpart youth, our other eighth graders. And this is especially high in soda. These numbers were both for artificially and sugar sweetened soda. Sweetened coffee and tea drinks are also very high. Here are numbers for 11th graders in 2015. This is a problem because these drinks have no nutritional value, even though the calories are high. Some studies show that sugary drinks make up the number one source of calories for teens. And they don't feel full. So, unlike eating a large steak or a piece of pizza, those calories don't feel the same in your tummy and you're still going to eat a lot more. Drinking just one 8 ounces of sugary beverage drink increases a child's risk of obesity by 60%. Here are some new ways that we can move forward. We can provide our families and children a safe place to be physically active. Matt Brown talked about lots of different options of how we can make this happen. We can encourage healthy beverage choices by making sugary drinks more expensive. And this isn't the only way to encourage the healthy options. Some other ways that we're already doing this in the community include education in the schools, improving the labels, which will roll out in 2020, reducing added sugars to products, reducing the availability of products, and restricting advertising and promotion. Another way that we can move forward is to provide these new revenue streams to support chronic disease prevention and management. So, this map is showing some of the successes that we've already seen in our nation. Implementing a sugar sweetened beverage tax is an approach that is gaining momentum across the country and the world. In 2014, Berkeley, California, was the first city in the nation to pass an excise tax on sugary drinks. The Berkeley ordinance imposes a penny per ounce tax on the beverage distributors. After about a year, some of the results have came in and they're showing us that 10% reduction in consumption of sugary sweetened beverages has already happened. And going along with that, people are choosing to purchase healthier beverages such as water, which is up 16% in sales. And store revenue has remained constant. And going along with that, the evidence so far is not the history claims that the taxes will have a negative impact on jobs or small business. And we'll leave you with this success. We're really proud of being in a city that already supports healthy options within the reach of all residents. In 2014, our county, or city council adopted this ordinance, this resolution, really supporting these things, supporting our health of our community. And going along with that, we just want to say thank you for listening to our presentation. We hope that you found this informative.
Thank you. And now, for opponent presentation, Leah Tolson and David Thorpe.
Thank you, council president and council members. I'm David Thorpe. I'm today here on behalf of, today here on behalf of the Oregon Soft Drink Association.
A little louder.
A little louder?
Could we do that?
I'll hold the mic.
Could you hear the last presentation okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'll skip that.
There you go.
I just want to share some beverage facts with you today and then have Leah talk about the impact on local businesses here. So, some of the facts about beverages, the beverage industry is trying to be part of the solution to obesity and diabetes. There's more choices, more options. There's not just your full calorie sodas. There's water, juices, teas, sports drinks, low and no calorie beverages, small portion sizes, so a lot of options. The industry has taken initiatives to have an impact on obesity and diabetes. In the school setting, we voluntarily, voluntarily removed full calorie soft drinks out of schools, replaced them with low and no calorie options, small portion sizes. That, our voluntary guidelines have a reduction of 90% reduction of beverage calories in schools nationwide. That voluntary guideline is now Oregon state law. We also worked with Michelle Obama to put the calorie label on all of our containers so consumers have nutrition information right at their fingertips. And we're also looking to reduce beverage calories consumed per person nationwide by 2025 by 20%, by again promoting those low and no calorie choices, the small options. So, beverages are not driving obesity and diabetes. Calories and sugar for beverages have been going down. Full calorie soda sales are down 17% in the last 15 years. So, Coke, Pepsi, Dr. Pepper, the full calorie beverages, sales are down 17%. The average calories per serving from beverages is down 31%. Again, a lot more consumption of the water, the low and no calorie drinks, which results in calories and average sugars down 39%. Government data shows that sugary beverages are only 6% of the average American diet, but it's still 94% that has an impact on, on health. So, all of these numbers are moving down while obesity and diabetes rates continue to increase. You saw this chart that listed all the beverage taxes that have been adopted in the last few years. Berkeley, Albany, Oakland, San Francisco, California, Boulder, Colorado were by the voters, very liberal communities, city councils in Philadelphia, Cook County, Illinois, and Seattle. I find it hard to see any of those cities there that look like St. Helens. Berkeley was mentioned before. Sales are down 9.6% in the city of Berkeley. Sales are up 6% and neighboring communities making up for some of that loss. Berkeley is a little bit of a tough place to use as an example of the impact of this tax because Berkeley consumers only consume 20% of the average sugary beverages that the average American does. So, they're already not drinking these beverages. So, that's why these numbers are pretty low. But beverage calories, the study has shown that the tax beverages, this was adopted as a tax to improve health. Beverages that are taxed, calories are only down 6 calories. People are buying the non-tax beverages, which has resulted in an increase of 32 calories. So, there's more beverage calories being consumed in Berkeley after the tax because consumers are moving to those other drinks. The local businesses have been hurt there, and again, the calorie consumption from beverages has actually increased. Philadelphia began their tax January 1st of this year. That's been a devastating impact on businesses and consumers there. Sales of soda are down 55% in the city so far this year. Sales of soda are up 38% outside of the city. So, people are moving outside of the city to make those purchases because they're not taxed outside the city. So, sales of all beverages are down 38, 28% in the Philadelphia grocery stores. When people go outside the city and make those beverage purchases, they're also purchasing all of the grocery items outside of the, outside of Philadelphia. So, Philadelphia stores have seen, grocery stores have seen a reduction of 9% of sales there. So, again, lost jobs there, not just in the beverage industry, but in the restaurant industry, the grocery industry, from people moving outside the city. industry, the grocery industry, from people moving outside the city. This is a real-world experience in Philadelphia, which I think a lot of businesses here in St. Helens are concerned about, that consumers will just go down the road to Scapoose. This is, you know, stores outside of Philadelphia encouraging consumers to stock up outside of Philadelphia, and when they do, they're making purchases more than just beverages, but all their grocery items. Cook County just started their tax on August first. A week from today, there's already a committee vote to potentially repeal that tax. The outrage there has been tremendous. This was a council vote, but the public is really upset about this tax. Bernie Sanders during the Philadelphia tax fight, this during the presidential campaign, had noted that this is a regressive tax. This is a tax that hurts the low and middle-income class the most, so it's not the best way to raise revenue. So the impact of beverage taxes so far is, as we've seen in Berkeley, it's been an actually increase in beverage calories consumed. Mexico has reduced their beverage calories by six calories per person, which you can't even measure on a bathroom scale. You've seen shifts outside of the cities in purchasing, which results in sales and job losses inside the city, which I think a lot of the folks in this room are concerned about. I'll toss it to Leah to...
Thank you for having us here today to talk so that you can kind of hear how...
Can you hear back there?
Yes.
Thank you.
How I envision that it might affect me. Just so you know, I'm Leah Tolson. My husband and I own the movie theater right here down the road. So if this passes, and there's been some talk about what, if it passes, maybe we could exempt some of the businesses, but it's going to hurt really bad. And I think that that won't really help us because how will our customers know that our business is exempt? So I think that once it passes in St. Helens, people will just go someplace else. They're going to assume that all businesses have to have it. So I don't see exemption as being something that's going to help. So if it passes, I then have two choices. I can pass it on to my customers. I think this will become a loss of sales and customers, and this is, this is how it's going to look. Here's the real, the reality of what this is going to look like. Right now, we do a super combo deal. It's a large bucket of popcorn, and it has two forty-four-ounce drinks that come with the same-day refill. So to put every potential bit of tax that could come in on it, this is what my sign will look like. I currently charge ten fifty. The sales tax on it will be three dollars and fifty-two cents. So my price went from ten fifty to over fourteen dollars. That's what that looks like. So that, that's what my new sign will look like. So that, that's just some reality, you know? And that's, of course, just one thing. I have lots of other deals too that'll look the same way. So I could, my second option would be to pay it myself. We'll still suffer because there'll be the assumption that they're going to have to pay it, so I think that we'll still lose customers. But this is going to cost, it would cost me about a thousand dollars a month, which might not seem like a lot of money, but there's some months that that would make me go into the losing money that month. So that's kind of a big deal. So this is what I envision. Even if I pay it myself, I envision that this is what we're going to see on signs coming through town. So even if I'm exempt, even if I pay it myself, this is what I think I envision is going The, the hard part about this thing is that it comes right on the heels of the minimum wage hike. So every single year, as business owners, which is basically the same businesses that sell a lot of soda, have to deal with the minimum wage hike, even if you don't pay your workers minimum wage. Even if you pay them more, they're going to want an increase in pay. They're not going to want to then make minimum wage after they haven't made minimum wage. So we have to deal with every year, per hour, we pay your fifty cents to a seventy-five cent hike every year for every hour that we pay out. This is huge. This is not small to us businesses, and we have to get really creative about how to do that. So I feel like that we're dealing with that every single July, and to ask us to add that to it, the same kind of businesses, that would be really hard. The other thing is, that I just want to make a point of, is that most of these businesses that you're hitting, they're the businesses that do tons of community service things. We're the ones supporting teams, supporting schools, supporting all the functions that go on. We're donating items and everything else. If we have less money and less things to be able to do that, it's going to hurt the community in that way too. I'm not going to be able to donate, you know, buckets of things to people. I'm not going to be able to do huge school fundraisers because I'm not going to have the money left over. So thank you for your time.
Leah, thank you. And now, what I'd like to do is call for public comment, and you, we went through a speaker sign-up, and I see that I have, we've got about twenty speakers, and we need to be out of here by seven o'clock if we possibly can, so that gives everyone a minute or two, so we, we've got to move on. And so I'd like the speaker sign up for the pro for, for supporting this. We have Daniel Morris, Jenny Rudolph, and Sherry Ford. Can you come forward, please? State your name and your testimony. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Dr. Daniel Morris. I'm an epidemiologist. I'm here on behalf of upstream public health to speak in support of sugar-sweet beverage taxes. But I just, just briefly, we think these taxes are a good idea. Not only do they generate, can they generate a lot of revenue, but they also have these beneficial health impacts that result from reducing consumption, really shifting consumption away from sugary beverages to, to non-sweetened drinks. I guess the, you know, just hearing the gentleman from the American Beverage Association, I think there's a lot of information that was pretty misleading or actually is not truthful. I'm happy to provide you with, with kind of set the record straight and so on, send some stuff along, but thanks for the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi there, I'm Jenny Rudolph, and I actually do not live in St. Helens. I live in Portland, and I commute every day to St. Helens. My office is right up on Highway thirty, and I frequent a lot of the coffee shops and local eateries around town every day when I'm here in town for lunch. And I just want to emphasize to people that people shop where they live, people shop where they work. I take maybe a thirty-minute lunch, maybe an hour, when I go out to eat here in St. Helens. There's no way I'm going to drive to Scapoose on my lunch break to buy something different. The nice thing about an excise tax, whether the sugar-sweetened beverage or the other ones that you might be looking at, is that you're capturing revenue from those of us who don't live in this town, but who pass through. All of the people from Portland who are going to the coast and stopping at Burger Bell on their way, you're capturing that money and then investing it here locally. And so I don't speak for all of Portland, but this Portlander does not mind investing in this community with the dollars that I spend here because I see the need. And the fact of the matter is, the parks that I am able to take my children to in Portland are beautiful, and your parks here are in such great need. So I appreciate the city council for taking the time to do that.
That's great. Quiet, please. Quiet. Let's give everyone some respect, okay? So some civility, please. Okay, well, everyone will have their chance to express their concerns. Next, we have Sherry Ford.
Hi, I have lived in St. Helens pretty much all of my life. I grew up here, and I just want to thank the city council for considering an option outside of property tax. I echo her remarks about a tax that allows people who live outside of the community to contribute to our infrastructure. I use our parks, I use our streets, I walk, I run, I take the dogs out in a stroller, and it sure would be nice to have some safer environments.
Thank you. And now for speaker sign-up for individuals who are neutral. We have Garrett Lines and Patrick Burkle.
I heard you.
Well, you remember.
Okay, I, I just want to say one thing that I hadn't heard right there. There was a question of whether Columbia County has obesity. I just wanted to mention that the Oregon Health Authority lists us as the fifth met app as the most obese county with forty percent overweight and twenty-eight, twenty-five percent obese. But that's, I just wanted to make that clear. The other thing I want to say is, if, if you go out for a sugar tax, it's going to take a while for a, for any place to actually get a sugar tax. So you're going to have a lot of negative ideas about it because, and, but that's what I was saying. But the other thing, one of the most important things I want to talk about is, and that is that there has been more and more research coming out that low-calorie, no-calorie artificially sweetened beverages have more, more propensity for, or as much propensity as sugar-sweetened beverages, for, for obesity, for diabetes, and heart conditions. You know? And, and so consequently, I would hate to see us have a sugar tax on sugar beverages and not include things that could be just as bad for you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for coming across like that, Doug.
How'd you come across?
I don't know. I don't, I...
You're okay.
As for spending twenty, spending all day with twenty-six kindergarteners. They're more of an influence on me than I am on...
You're with the twenty-seventh, right?
So, yeah. So Patrick Burkle, a St. Helens resident and a member of the St. Helens Budget Committee for the past five, maybe six years, along with Garrett, and this last year serving as chair. Actually, this talk about renewing or bringing in more income to the city goes beyond this past spring. I think it went back another year before that, where we charged the city council, the committee, charged city staff with looking at additional revenue sources. I, so while I am neutral on this particular effort, I do think it is important that everybody here understand that with our city's budget situation, where we have been losing positions and losing services, we're finally at a position where we are able to stabilize that and perhaps to even begin to fill in some of the gaps. But we still cannot do that without some sort of additional revenues. And so while I don't envy your, your position making a decision on this particular, particular issue, I would hope that everybody here tonight does involve themselves in the city budget committee process. I think in the five years that I've been on the committee, there are more people present in this room, public members, than have come to the dozens of meetings that we have had in those years. So I would certainly hope, if not this solution, that folks here are showing their commitment to public activity and involvement, will certainly involve themselves in the ongoing communication to improve our city, city's budget and finding solutions for that.
Well spoken. Thank you. Now...
Doug, can I interrupt a second?
Yes.
I'd just like to point out that there's a gentleman in the back of the room, merril shirt, that is, I've seen him put fifty ballots in the ballot box there.
So is this young lady? I'm just countering her negative vote, her positive vote, my negative vote. Bounce the power. Anybody want to vote? There's two more.
Well, this is a democratic society, and since now, now it's, the whole thing is a waste of time now.
Well, do hands, raise hands.
Yes, we will do that.
So I think you guys are a cop-out because the losing tax is an easy way...
Can you, can you express yourself? Can you express yourself when you come up, please? Thank you. Okay? No, can you, can you express yourself when you're called upon, please? Okay? So here we go. David Kirby, Susie Wilson, and Doug Stokes will be speaking against this proposal. Could you come up, please?
Good evening. My name is David Kirby. I thought I had a heart attack when I saw I was limited to two minutes. Now you want me to thirty seconds?
No, wait, a minute or two.
Thank you. I purchased the St. Helens Thriftway Store in nineteen ninety-one, put it at the Red Apple Market. We currently call it the Market Fresh. I'll get to my bullet points here. Beverages comprise over six percent of our total sales. This tax would put an undue burden upon a retailer. It's, it's a crazy way to try to fight money. Put a food barrel donation or put a donation barrel in the check stand. We've supported fireworks that way. We built a skate park that way. If we're to take a twelve-pack of pop that we currently charge three dollars and eighty-nine cents, we'd propose to actually take it six dollars and seventy-seven cents. A two-liter, dollar sixty-nine becomes a three-dollar and four cent. In the years that I've operated here, this town and community has changed drastically. We've watched the closing of a plywood mill, of a near-mill, freezing lumber, Boise Cascade shutdown, and what we've converted to is a commuter, community. That community, we fought to retain and maintain the business that we have in town. I got news for you. Mr. and Mrs. St. Helens are not going to spend six dollars and seventy-seven cents on a twelve-pack of pop when they can stop in Scapoose and buy it on the way back through. It's just the way it works. Grocery industry is a one percent net profit business. Out of that, I get to figure out how I get to remodel my grocery store, and where I make my donations. And we donate heavily to this community. Thirteen nights, fireworks, the Columbia Learning Center, the school district, every Little League Association, and we have an ongoing long-term relationship with the food You know, and, and I'm not clear here what we're trying to, are we trying to collect money for the parks, or are we trying to become a healthier community? Right. Where do we start, where do we stop? What's next?
It was presented to us...
I understand, sir.
...that it could kill two birds with one stone. I mean, that kind of, that kind of scenario. That's what, that's how it was...
You could kill some groceries.
Exactly, exactly. That's how it was presented to us. And we're open, we're listening. We're listening.
We employ thirty-five people, okay? And I'm looking at at least a ten percent reduction in staff if this thing goes through. But we're paying union wages to these people, we pay health and welfare to these people. Nobody's asked us for help. We donate all the time. We put food, we put money barrels in check stands, support our local parks. Our customers would contribute. This, this is a backdoor way to get a sales tax, which we're mowed down every time it's been presented to go get voted through. Thank you very much. Thank you, David.
State your name, please.
Susie Wilson, I'm a real estate broker here, and after fifteen years, finally sold Violet Village property. It's going to be apartments and bath in Commercial Front. We have, have people that will be selling these products and that are interested in purchasing some of this property, but I have gotten phone calls from the commercial brokers that I'm working with right now, and if this tax goes through, they're not interested in coming. And we have worked hard, have worked very hard to get this property sold and get some new businesses in our town. So I'm really hoping that, you know, here at this, because my developers may be paying a lot of development charges that will go to the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug? Name for the record, please.
I'm Doug Stokes, liquor agent for the St. Helens Liquor Store. This beverage tax represents seventy-five percent of my non-liquor revenue. Seventy-five percent. You take seventy-five percent away from any business, that's a pretty huge blow. So, and there is anything I can do about it. The state of Oregon, Oil CC, Oregon Liquor Control Commission, we all pay, we all get paid the same set salary. So there's no way for me to make up that. I'm with everybody else. We have employees, we have to give them vacations, we have to give them raises, we have to give them everything that any other small business has to give. And if this passes, this is going to be very difficult for us to survive. Plus also, people go from Portland, they have to go through Scapoose. I can guarantee you that they will be stopping at the Scapoose Liquor Store. It's the same price as I charge, it's the state-mandated price. They will be purchasing their liquor, their other-related items there. We will not be reduced. I also support a lot of businesses or... I also support a lot of businesses or our shows, you need them, we've all done them. And that will succeed, and so I'm glad we have our voice and hoping you can see your clear to see this through. Thanks much.
Thank you. Kami, Laura, and Lauren.
Hi, my name is Laura Bird, and I am a resident of the City of St. Helens. I wanted to have a little history of sugar taxes in the Americas, which started in seventeen thirty-three with the Molasses Act. That was enacted by the British Parliament for the tax on sugar and molasses. British government did this because they wanted to force American colonists only to buy molasses from the British West Indies. No, that doesn't have a lot to do with what we've got going here, but bear with me. Largely opposed by the colonists, the tax was rarely paid. Bribery of officials and smuggling to avoid it was prominent, effectively leaving the tax uncollected for years due to colonial evasion. In seventeen sixty-four, Britain was facing huge public debt, and the Revenue Act, also known as the Sugar Act of seventeen sixty-four, was enacted, causing immediate economic hardship in New England and the Middle Colonies. However, the Sugar Act was not trade regulation. The specific aim was to raise revenue, just as the city is looking at. I feel the City of St. Helens proposed sugar tax has more to do with the revenue than the city's suggested concern for our citizens' health. History tends to repeat itself, and I see evasion of the proposed sugar tax by citizens shopping out of town, effectively hurting local business, which in turn hurts the local economy. I challenge the City of St. Helens to do a better job of budgeting the monies they already have and becoming more frugal with our tax dollars. If the council members are really here to represent the citizens of St. Helens, the only choice is a no vote on the proposed sugar tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Name for the record, please. And Kami, are you here?
Good evening, city council members and citizens of St. Helens. My name is Lauren Thurman. My husband Rocky and I grew up in St. Helens and have lived here most of our lives. We have owned the Dairy Delish for almost twenty-six years. I am here as a citizen and business owner to oppose this unfair beverage tax. We do not need government meddling in what we should or shouldn't eat or drink. This tax is discriminating. This tax isn't open-door to tax any other items that are deemed bad for us. What's next? Ice cream? Bread? Dairy products? Donuts or chips? Beef or bacon? Where does it stop? Studies have shown that a sedentary lifestyle has contributed to obesity and health problems. So are you going to tax video games, computers, TVs, phones? What's next? The answer is in education, which is already happening in our schools and in the media, and they're doing a good job. Yes, healthy choices are important, but people need to make these decisions on their own without being forced monetarily by the city. Our customers and the people of this town have the right to choose for themselves. At the Dairy Delish, we care about our customers as all other businesses do, and we appreciate and we understand that the money they spend at our place is hard-earned, and we do not want to charge them more just because they choose a pop over water. It's not my right to push healthy choices on them by raising prices on certain items, and it's not the city council's right to tax them for it. In closing, I ask the city council to really examine the negative impact this tax will have on this city and the people who live here. As businesses, big and small, we need council decisions that help us, not hurt us. And this beverage tax will most definitely, without a doubt, hurt us big time. Thank you for listening and thank you for your time.
Name for the record, please.
Kami Maygrove, Dear Island. I would like to say that your loyalty belongs to the small business people in this community. The small business people is what runs this community. If you were so concerned about the health of the kids in this community, the City of St. Helens wouldn't be in words to bring toxic sludge for the Portland Superfund site through the community to harm kids. So really, it's kind of hypocritical that you think you're going to help the kids by putting on a soda tax when you're bringing in carcinogens. I'm not for this, and I didn't see the City of St. Helens step out in outrage when the high school made a deal with Coca-Cola for sugary drinks to pay for the football stadium. You want economic development? You want economic development? You holler small business, but yet you're trying to penalize the people that live and work here, that run this community, and I think shame on you.
Thank you. And Leah? Shannon and Chris?
Hi, my name is Shannon Barrow. I am the owner, one of the owners of Bertucci's Chocolates, a local small business. I've lived here all my life. I am also president of Shoestring Community Players, a community theater group that has been in this community for thirty-five years. We support them, and we support other small businesses, we support other nonprofit organizations. As a small business, we give gift baskets for raffles, we sell tickets for other organization nonprofit events. We bend over backwards to help other nonprofits in our community as a small business. If you put tax on sugar, what's next? My chocolate, the ice cream? I mean, I'm concerned that this is just going to kill us. As a representative of Shoestring Community Players, I'm wearing a shirt that we're selling this month that represents a whole bunch of businesses that are supporting a nonprofit organization. And I feel that if this passes and these other organizations or other businesses cannot support a nonprofit organization, next year, this shirt will be blanked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Chris Ossman. Grew up here. When I was a kid, well, let me first say, it's like, all you guys are trying to do is figure out how to extract money out of the people here. How about we figure out how to bring more money into the community instead? Makes way more sense. What I propose is St. Helens is the last town around that has no cruising ordinance. We have the perfect gut, that's what we did as kids here, is drive our hot rod shooter. Well, now, these same guys that all still own hot rods, you go to all the car shows, they're responsible to people with lots of money. You can't buy a hot rod, you know, a old muscle car, things like that, for cheap. They've got money. We set it up so they pay for a cruising permit, you know? Run it from, you know, Friday evening and then, you know, till midnight on Friday, till midnight on Saturday, and then till ten on Sunday. You know, charge them a fee for improvement to cruise, bring in some revenue, you know, get on the horn with the car clubs around the west coast. They'll come up from California. They did when Longview was still cruising and they got shut down. You have people from all up and down the west coast here. You know, let's bring some money here instead of extracting out of the people that are already here. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. And Leah, do you want to testify again? Is Leah still here? Or did she leave? Would you like to testify again, or it was your first, enough?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. And so we have Tiffany, Kim, and Brady. Name for the record.
Tiffany Smith, downtown Santa Rosa. Let me start by saying, we definitely need to help our city parks. I see that, we all saw that. I just think we need to come up with a better way to do it. I just think that we need to come up with a better way to do it. So thank you for opening this up to some additional, some additional options. I will honor what you said about just saying yes to everybody that came before me, every person that spoke before me. I second. I'm a small business in this community. We give back as much as we possibly can, but running a small business in this community is becoming harder and harder and harder. We want to take care of our community, we want to take care of our employees, and with the rising cost of everything, we're just not going to be able to do that. Now, my friends in Scappus would really like you to pass this. It would be wonderful for their communities. We looked at a map earlier, Cook County in Illinois. My best friend has a restaurant in Cook County. She runs a little hot dog shop. We were talking today about her sales, and her pop sales have gone down fifty percent. Now, in a restaurant, it's one of your higher profit margins is your, is your pop sales. Sometimes it's what, it's what floats you. To lose that is just astronomical. And, and, okay. And this is coming from someone who is living it right now in Cook County. So please, please think long and hard about the economic impact of our small business community.
Thank you. Brady?
There was a time when I beat him with a machete on this tax, but I chose to stop drinking soda and drink water most of the time, and I didn't need the city council to tell me to do that. You have a heart attack or two, and you change your behavior, and I don't need a tax to tell me to do that myself. But this is a horrible idea. Even if you, even if you somehow got McDonald's to charge a tax on sugary drinks, even the stupidest person is going to figure out to say, I want diet. And then you go and you would fill it up with whatever you wanted, unless you're going to, unless you're going to hire a code enforcement tax person to stand there at McDonald's to enforce that you don't get the wrong soda, how are you going to do it? And if you get a refill, what are you going to do? Give them another thirty cents? I mean, the implementation of it is just ridiculous. You're not going to do it. McDonald's advertises nationally. You think you're going to get Walmart to change and advertise a different price just in the City of St. Helens? No. It is not going to, the only way the tax is going to do what you say you want to do and not just be to enrich the city coffers, to change behaviors, is to get the tax to be enforced. And you're not going to get it enforced, period. It's a bad idea. I will say I appreciate you actually holding the form. You really did a bad job of where you had it and the amount of time, but at least you showed up unlike some other people, so I do appreciate that you're here.
Thank you, Brady. Is Cam here?
Yeah.
Five minutes. And how about Craig? Or Jubilee?
Hi, I'll be short and sweet. I'm Jubilee Beetley. I go in business here. I'm practically nobody, but I did, I was born here and I was raised here. I married a guy who was born here and raised here. We're going to raise our kids here. It'll be great. But the problem is, I don't know, I'm sorry. Okay, the problem is that I agree we need a tax. Not a sugar tax necessarily, but we do need something, because I take my kids to parks and they're horrendous. And I take my kids to Scappus parks and they're gorgeous. And I think that though the sugar tax will probably not work out, that we need to think of another tax. Either it be the biker dudes tax or the, or the, I don't know, a tax for something. I'll start to make you guys a standing meeting, because I'm interested in this. I want to know how we're going to fix this, how to make our city better, because I'm going to live here the rest of my life, I want it to be better. So thank you, and I hope we figure something out.
Thank you. Matt? Do we have more of these? Well, I didn't know. Okay. Do you want to do a handbook? We could do, we could do that, but in the interim, is there anyone who felt left out at this point? Please come forward. Name for the record, please. We'll give you a minute each.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, name for the record, please.
My name is Kimberly Cabrera. We work for Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola does a, they sell to all the local markets that have fountain machines, a bag in the box. The bag in the box goes to the machine at a five-to-one ratio, which means five times that is water, one time that is the soda itself and the sugar. That means that this is city water we're already happy to pay for, the businesses are already happy to pay for the water. We have some of the highest water rates. My water bill is five hundred dollars every bill cycle, and we're going to have to now pay a soda tax on water that's being used for Coca-Cola coming out of the fountain machine. It's not being bottled beforehand, it's being bottled, it's being put in an actual cup there at the store. So it makes it even more expensive. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Name for the record, please.
My name is Shawna Harrison. I'm a local realtor. I wrote down some of my sentiments real quick. I'll try to not be super lofty, I'll chew it to the minute. So I support parks just like everybody else, and I'm just wondering what makes you think of a city that this is going to bring positive change? You know, we're so close to Metro, and you've got to approve two major housing developments in our community and at least our prime industrial land to a pot grow farm out of California, not even a federally legal commodity. Why is it our burden to improve our parks? As citizens who already pay extraordinary water bills, this is truly another cost you feel our citizens and our community should have to encumber. Godfrey Park, just for the record, is located in a seasonal pond, so the thought of improving it too much doesn't seem to behoove anyone. I would think that storm drain systems is probably a number one. I'm concerned of a lot of members in this community that they're paying attention to where the water is flowing. I support our parks, I support development, my tax is what I had thirty percent last year. The dream is lofty for a community that has kids getting hit by bicycles in major intersections like the one down the street from me on Columbia and Vernonia. And the area both my father and I requested several times down here at council meeting for improvements to be made to accommodate the influx of traffic. This tax will be based off grams of sugars in drinks, correct? So even though I bought my organic sugar cane beverage that perhaps I have to consume because I'm low-guy clemish, I have to be burdened with an additional tax. But I can buy a cookie with sugar with no fiscal repercussion? Why should I have to pay to develop the riverfront? Why won't that cost be incorporated to people like the condos you envision there? An area that would be perfect for something that could bring revenue in, such as a ferry. Diabetes is a national issue, not just our burden today, and this public forum is exactly, as you opened in the session, an issue. You're right, it's massive, and it's apparent that your city and your employers who pay your tax to pay you to work for us and have our best interest at heart. If you're concerned about sugar, the amount of money we pour into the number-one thing that we promote here, Halloween Town, the number-one day of sugar consumption in the world, and you guys want me to bear more of the burden, I say no, I pay state tax.
Thank you. Okay, so this will conclude our public forum with the exception that Matt is going to pass out these options that he went over, the eleven options of how we can obtain taxes for our parks. If you have any ideas, please fill this out and give it to us, and hopefully, I'm going to encourage people to come to our city council meetings. to encourage people to come to our city council meetings. Express yourself, and we're here to listen, and it's good to be part of the public record. I appreciate all those people who testified this evening. One other thing, if you expect deliberations, what's your thoughts, council? Any thoughts on Keith deliberating in our next meeting tonight?
I'm not sure we shouldn't wait for the full council.
I think we're going to wait until the full council gets here for deliberation, and that's Councilman Locke's recommendation. We'll see when the mayor gets here, and we'll figure out whether we're going to deliberate on this issue tonight or in our next council, regular council meeting two weeks from now.
Are we voting again? Are we going to do a hand vote because we can't do the other vote?
No, the hand vote, if you can do this and circle this, then we'll have it for the record, and we can go over it.
If people wanted to just drop it off with Matt as you go out?
As you go out, you can drop the little slip of paper by me, or you can stick it on the desk here at the front, or if it's easier, stick it on the desk. I did take away the voting box, so nobody can put any more things in there, and I'll throw that away.
So thank you for this evening, and with that, we'll close the public forum.